Welcome back, everyone in the audience and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, the 6th again. We're in the afternoon session. Project Jeddah item is an action item. This is the Valley County Firewise Grant Project Approval of Recommended Recipients. Stephanie Lynn Nelson.
This is my last time doing this. I'll have to deal with this character next year. Next year. So anyway, so I've taken relish in it because as you know, it's a pet program for me. And tell you what, we've had a really good team once again this year. Ryan from Garber from McCall Fire, John Lilyhog, Mara and I. A lot of hours go into these assessments. We come in with these recommendations thoroughly vetted, thoroughly thought through so that you don't have to.
That's a good thing.
You know, I mean, that's kind of the idea, right?
That's right.
But as you mentioned earlier, there are lots of ears out there on these events. So five things I want to say about this program because I think it's really legitimate. And Valley County is talking about Firewise. Talking about it, finally, we're talking about it. Number two, landowners discover they're not alone. There's someone to help strategize for a solution and they can bring a long-term approach to living with fire. Number three, we discover areas and landowner interest to support application for larger federal grants. Almost a lost leader, who's out there and who wants to be active and where is their risk and need? Number four, the Firewise Grants and Bring It, Don't Burn It combined are the cheapest fuels we bring out of our communities. And they're from areas that are high density and difficult to treat on a larger scale. They really are effective in that way, dollar for dollar, killer deal.
You think the insurance community is starting to wake people up?
Well, there's things happening regularly every day now. It's a big deal.
That's a big, that's a big deal to people.
And then number five, residency Valley County trying to reduce the risk of wildfire in their community. And those are five big things I think this grant program does. Again, I think it's a heck of a deal.
And I think, you know, I don't know if it's a number six or not, but I think once we get the program started in area, it sells itself. Takes a lot of work on you guys' part, I'm not dismissing that, but when people see their neighbor do something, they want to do something.
Well, and that's, that's why part of our program here is built on that premise. Good portion, and I think I discussed it, our geographic areas have expanded greatly this year. We're not just servicing the McCall area. We're also out Yellow Pine, Smiths Ferry, High Valley, Barton. We've got one at Smalley Lane. Of course, Pine Lakes has always been very active. We're just seeing a spread of activity, including Round Valley, which is one of Mara's new projects that she's really trying to expand in. So, you know, we're trying to service those areas too, so that we get some demonstration going on in their neighborhoods. Yes, I can pick up a phone or answer the phone about Bear Basin and, oh, oh yeah, we know what you do, we see it, we know. That's great, but being able to support these outlying communities and get things going there, I think it's excellent.
There's one around there, Landmark North?
It's West Blazer is the landowner.
Round, it's Homestead, round, it's a Homestead subdivision. And, you know, they've got, they've got a diverse group of people that have moved in. Some have been there forever, some are new from other areas, so they're, they're just kind of feeling there. You know, we're a little more independent down here in the South County. No question about it. Not everybody wants to look exactly the same. So it's, it's a, it's a struggle, but you're going to see, you know, we've got another applicant on Red Fox. And we're really excited that that's going to be an opportunity to do a nice demo for that road because it needs demo.
That, I probably can't see online. This is down to the left down Red Fox?
No, it's on the right this time. It's a different, it's a different individual. But John Lilyhog is overseeing that project. He's really excited about it and I think some good things are going to come out of there and we're going to start seeing some change down there. So usually, you know, people don't believe it, but then when you see it finished, you go, oh my gosh, gorgeous, right?
I don't know if you've been down there lately, but this was the year, the winter, I'm going to say, of downed trees. You must have had some microbursts or something this spring then?
We were just down there.
Man, is there a lot of downed, broken trees. Been a lot of it this year.
Right, right.
Do you, I mean, on all these contracts and different things, are some of them with contracts that you contract out with an individual that actually does the work? Or is this some of the homeowners are actually doing some of their?
Actually a variety. Now, all of this, all of this is done on a reimbursement basis. So nothing is granted until the inspector starts the project with the landowner or the community and then sees that through and then signs off on the work. Oftentimes, they do use a contractor. We'll either direct them to somebody or they have somebody they already work with. We try and help them get good value for their money. And so, because there's different levels. But we also have landowners that have demonstrated the ability to do the work themselves. Either they have the equipment or the expertise, or they gather community, their community as a group and they rent equipment and they bring it in and they accomplish the work. So it's a diversity. That's not, that is not managed lightly. We look very closely at what would be, I would say, a demonstrated ability to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
We are not paying people to cut their grass. We are asking individuals to be responsible for reducing fuels in a manner that's conducive of. We didn't, we did not fill every grant request. We have 10 or 11 that we did not fulfill because they did not meet the standard or criteria. And part of it, many of them were removing large trees. We don't fund removing large trees. And we also, we feel it's really important that the impact even of that individual spills over into their neighborhood. You know, they just aren't a standalone on an island somewhere and not have any great impact on somebody else. So we really want this to be a community project. We took some individual applications and built them into community projects and got the HOAs involved. And having them over, do oversight on the project, which is pretty exciting because it helps with workload. You know, if you've got a really active HOA and you're working with them and you're getting the project sort of laid out and you understand what's going to happen and then they take over managing all the individuals inside and they're the fiduciary contact for the reimbursement, yay. You know, not, you just get bigger bang for your buck. And just the fact that 70% of the awards this year are going to communities, that's awesome. That, look at the impact that, you know, we're getting out of it. So it really is a, it's a super important part of this situation and we're driving individuals into that. And we're also looking at situations where we can take and be a lead project in an area that maybe there's our grant money down the road, but these smaller projects are going to get people talking and they're going to get people active and ready to participate and be a part of a larger scale project because they're starting to see what can happen when you.
Well, and I'm assuming you come to us too when 50 grand isn't enough, that you need more funds.
Want to give us some more, we'll spend it.
You have to talk to Kirk in that.
I know the answer, but you can't throw that at me and not get that response, right? And that's just the way it goes.
Everybody's the same way.
I know, I know, I know. But you know, we, we, we awarded about 47,000 last year. Because again, we don't award every application.
We're getting close.
But we're at 50 this year. We're right on the money. And we feel like we are servicing a tremendous variety of individuals in the, in the county that we are getting this money spread out into, I think I even did a fire district distribution. And, you know, we're hitting a couple of areas without fire districts, Smiths Ferry. I'm pretty excited about that, man. I had my eye at that place for a long time.
And there's a lot of work down there.
And there is a lot of work and now they're stepping up and want to do it.
Before I forget, we, Scott Kirk came in last week. They're going to do a big job there north of what we call Bear Dump Road to the highway, 4 million board feet. They're asking us to close the road. We haven't made that decision yet.
Oh, wow.
I don't think we can, but we'll see.
Wow. So, yeah, so anyway, so most of the projects are fuel removal. You know, we're doing a few other things in the work of it. Education becomes relevant when you have a larger organization that you're working with. So, you know, you can have that impact ongoing. And then we have a lot of communities that they didn't get in on what was going on last year. They saw what was going on around them and went, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, now I want to do something. And that's, you know.
It's a good thing.
That's what you, that's what you see. So anyway, still a lot of work to do, a lot of oversight to do, but I think we have a great team. And I think that we're going to get out there. Mara has picked and chosen some of her former applicants to work with again, but then also some outreach. She gets to Yellow Pine. I said, you got, you got time to go to Yellow Pine?
It's ways up there.
And they're super excited because they really, they want to do something bigger out there. And this is just an opportunity, got to get that connection going. So new people out there, their, their fire department's growing, they're funding it, they're doing some neat things. And so that's a big picture item and something as she's determining where to go forward with her federal grant requests. You know, that opens a lot of doors in that area.
Did they just, for my, did they ever finish the Big Creek or was?
Not, they, they've done quite a bit more on the forest.
They're not.
But I don't know that that's ever going to ever end.
It'd be a lifetime kind of a thing.
You know, and we're still trying to get set up with a representative out there to talk to them about it because, you know, it's very possible that you could have a Yellow Pine Big Creek project and split them up. You know, when I came into this, Big Creek was the problem. And so I was kind of hoping we could get that slayed before I left, but if I thought it was even in the works, I would be super excited about that.
Need to go back out there. I haven't been out there in a couple of years.
It's because it takes a couple of years to get out there.
Well, it depends on the time of year.
I think it's easier on sleds probably.
Probably. My dad and I did it. It was a great trip. All the way through was nine and a half hour drive. All the way through, all the way through and up, Orin C. Sesh back to Woodville. And two tanks of gas.
Ah, yeah. So anyway, gentlemen, what I'm asking for today is approval of $50,000 that is budgeted and allocated for this use and for us to be able to distribute it in the way that our inspector team has recommended to you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the Valley County Firewise Grant Project.
Second motion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Got it. Are there anything you want to add? We got four more minutes.
So we are actually putting a wildfire awareness seminar this Friday at Ponrosa Park. Valley County Fire Working Group partnered with Ponrosa Park. And we have seven presentations out there pertaining to wildfire insurance. I have an insurance agent coming out and speaking on that. We have McCall Fire that's speaking on wildfire preparedness and home evaluations. Stephanie will be out there speaking, myself included, so we would love to have you guys there. It's from 1:00 to 5:00, 1:00 o'clock to about 3:00. It's actually a field presentation. So the park ranger and a natural, a master naturalist will be hiking and doing a field presentation on metal marsh and the hazard fuel reduction project that they had out there for the last couple of years. And starting at 3:00, if you do not want to come out and do the field hike, we have indoors at the Activity Center at Ponrosa Park. And that's when we're going to start our presentations.
That's at 3:00?
Yep, at 3:00. And I'll send out an invite, but that is 3:00 to 5:00. And we have five or six presentations and then afterwards, open discussion from landowners and people alike that are wanting some information on wildfire mitigation and awareness, so.
Is it Friday?
Yep, Friday.
This coming Friday?
This coming Friday. And then Thursday, I do have an open house at Lake Fork Office for the community members to come out and meet me. We do have a woody debris bin that will be available for landowners as well. And it's just a meet and greet type of open house, so people can come out and talk and just meet me.
Would you have phone, computer?
Yes.
Car?
Yes.
Everything's good?
Everything, yep.
Awesome. Thanks everybody for helping with that.
Yeah, thank you guys.
You got my pie too?
Yes, but I don't need it because I hook up it. I heard that it's out there.
What's this about pie?
Oh, pie.
What did you say?
White pie.
Well, I thought you said pie.
I kind of did too, I'm like.
I didn't get invited to the pie party.
Pie is, that's at the groomers meeting where we get pie.
That's funny. Now, and I'm going to make it funny because, you know, I've been doing this a long time. And I kind of laugh because in order to get her set up properly, you needed an IT department.
Yeah.
You needed a grant department, you needed a GIS department, you have needed, how many other departments are supporting on these activities?
Which we didn't have 14.
Which, yes, I've been the department.
You were on your own.
But I'm, I'm, I can't tell you how that warms my heart. Because that creates the legacy.
Yep.
You know, that, that isn't just one person. It's a team that's dedicated and working towards a solution. And that just, that's a win as far as I'm concerned.
We got her.
But I do think it's funny.
One thing I really admire about this place is everybody chips in and does their part, but thank you, thank you very much.
I ain't going anywhere for a while. You are stuck with me for a while.
When is the while? End of the year?
My contract ends the end of September. I got a lot of work to do. We've got some grant money that I'm allocating that's going to get taken care of in Bear Basin and on Jug Mountain. And then we've got some evacuation planning on Jug Handle and blah, blah, blah.
The one we did over on West Side, French Hazard, did that gal finish that one?
You know what? We ended up doing five really hard acres inside French Loop.
French Loop.
And that looks good. Get out there, see, it's nice. We're going to do another little three acres. We're going to cut up and create a little better access on their road there. And then we've, I probably will be in here before the end of the month. We're, we're kind of crawling along on that large 27 acre piece that we gave to the lowest bidder.
That's what I was asking about. Was the contractor was from council? Yeah, I was interested to see how that was going to work, but you'll know until you try.
So anyway, I'll probably come in and ask you for an extension and you can decide if you want to get one. And, but those are all good lessons learned.
Sure.
And it isn't the quality of the work that I think will be the result. I think it's the timing.
Well, everybody gets a shot at it.
And she's getting a good one and some great opportunity to cure things. And I think we're going to have a good result, just going to be a little more involved then. So I'll get on the agenda with that so we can have that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
They did good approval for the East McCall MOU, so that will be on the agenda on Monday. Mackenzie Castor will be presenting that, so.
Good, good.
But that's exciting because that's gone through the legal system and everything, so.
Oh, yeah, the legal department.
The legal department, yeah.
It's a one-stop shop, that's all.
Well, it's kind of cool because she literally built the program and didn't have any of these folks to help really. Does the Forest Service help much? Do they have any GIS or anybody that'd help?
They've always shared, you know, any of their modeling data that's, you know, assisted us with our hazard assessment, you know. I mean, our fire working group is magnificent. And meetings tomorrow morning, by the way, Donnelly Fire, and always welcome. And I assume he'll have Zoom too.
We will not.
We're not going to have Zoom.
It's an in-person meeting.
Oh, you got to come.
I want to see the doctor in Boise tomorrow, so I can't make the appointment.
Commissioner Campbell, if you have a minute, it wouldn't be a horrible thing for you to come. It's only about an hour and a half long.
What time?
9:30.
That's a very interesting meeting.
That's the Donnelly Fire Department?
Yep. And we're going to have Idaho Power presenting on their fire mitigation plan. So it is going to be kind of a, a cool one because they have about an hour presentation describing the different aspects of mitigation that they're going to adhere to and their plans for the next three to 10 years.
So two and a half hours, Commissioner Campbell.
A little moonscape, you know, under the transmission.
Yeah, but it's relevant because, you know, we're finding out all kinds of things, including that the work that Idaho Power does, if it's in a project zone, can be utilized as a match. That takes a burden off the landowner and makes it really nice because, you know, some of our grants have a match and some of them don't. And the ones that do, if they're involved and they've done something that helps the landowner out, they can just be a good contributor by having the work done on their property without having to pay.
Well, like everybody says, as long as the money keeps coming in, we'll keep going.
Well, let's see, how many years have John and I had conversations about, well, this got to end sometime? You know, that was 19 years ago. So it is pretty amazing.
Hopefully it doesn't end for another 19 now.
Yeah, and I think there's going to be more coming.
Oh, probably. How long have you been sitting here?
I'm in my 12th year.
Jeez. Because that was the beginning of this business on my own, after the partnership that I was in before. That's how, it's gone fast, Commissioner.
I don't know, some days are really.
Some days drag.
He's caught him counting down on that calendar. You know what's been really fun about all this is the fact that even though I screw up and I forget stuff, people are very forgiving. Give me a break. You can't remember at all.
You know what? It's a pretty thankless job, buddy. And I think you've done a great job. You've been fantastic to work with. And I don't think that we would have gotten through half.
What was your name again?
No, I'm serious. You got to have support, you got to have trust. You don't have trust and support, you can't get some of these crazy things done. And, you know, a lot of it was a leap of faith because we didn't know. And you know what? It's worked. And it's because you had enough vision to say, hey, you know what? I can see, I can see where we can get, and that makes all the difference in the world.
Now GNAs come along, that's going to, I think that's going to get really big, really fast.
I hope so.
I'm a little concerned about the smoke issues on, rule is rules. I think we figured about half a million acres a year the Forest Service plans to burn. And I don't know how the public's going to take all that smoke.
They never take it well.
We'll have to see because.
But you know what? How do you want your smoke? You want your smoke from a preventative? Well, you want it at a preventative pace or do you want to have it put on top of you at a catastrophic pace? How do you want your smoke? That's the question.
All right, well, we got to move on. You might want to stick around for the next one. I'm not sure my Cindy's got cooking here.
I want to hear what she has to say on this.
Next agenda item is an action item. This is a professional list. Fire professionals and wetland delineators. Cindy?
Pretty boring stuff.
What do you, what are you talking about? You want a list?
Yeah, we're going to create, well, people come in and say, well, who should I call? Well, I don't know, I can't give you any recommendations, that type of thing. We currently have a list of surveyors and engineers doing business in Valley County. And we'll put anybody on the list as they come.
There's no qualifications, no certificates or anything?
For fire, fire professionals, they have to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Right now, it's all about forestry, which is Don Lilyhog. And then I believe two people at Crestline that have been put on the list. It's at, at their request.
And the wetlands delineators?
And then the other one, I was talking to a lady last week and she does a lot of wetland delineation up here and assessments, and she's been working up here for probably 15, 20 years. And I get a lot of requests for, well, who do I get to determine whether I have wetlands? I don't know, call the Corps of Engineers. So the Corps of Engineers is kind of difficult to get a hold of. But she can do that, that work. I know Frank does that type of thing. I'm sure there's people at Crestline that do that type of thing. But I'd like to create these lists, maybe put one ad in the newspaper. Hey, if you're doing work in Valley County and you have these skills, please let us know. We'll put you on a list. And then when we hand it out, there'll be a disclaimer of some sort that says, we don't guarantee their work at all.
That was going to be my only question, is a disclaimer for Valley County where we're not held liable for their decisions. But I think this is a great idea. I think it's also, you know, you're all, people ask them all the time, who's a good contractor? Who's good at septic tanks? Who's good at drilling wells? I mean, they call me a lot on that.
I'm, I'm not going to go there, though.
No, that would be a giant list. You're just talking about fire, wildland fire and, and wetlands delineation. What about floodplain? I guess you're the floodplain.
The floodplain.
I think you ought to put your name on there too.
Stay out, that's my, get out of there.
You have Mara's name on there?
You get, you get now.
Any questions, anybody? No? This is an action item. So I'm assuming Cindy, you'll get us a list and then we'll kind of get a chance to peruse it and say, yeah, your name.
Well, I'll, I'll let you know what the, what the list is. This was, do you mind if I do a, a list? I kind of ran it by Oki and he didn't think that there was any legal reason stopping us. Just that if people start arguing in the, the future about, well, he's on the list before I am or, you know, you're giving preferential listing to them, that type of thing, then we'll just pull the list.
Just do it in alphabetical order and tell them that. So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we authorize the planning and zoning director to create a professional list for fire professionals and wetland delineators. Yeah, seconded. What, does that work?
Yeah, I said, I was going to say, I'll probably just put it on our website, then people can just look on there.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Bada bing bada boom.
Yep.
That's quite as interesting as the fire people.
Okay.
It's more interesting, but we don't have to have that conversation here, but we should have that conversation.
We're going to take a quick five-minute break and then we'll get started on our exemptions.
Exemptions. That's exemption.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're under 130 agenda items. These are action items. These are property tax exemption applications. So Sue, I'm going to turn it over to you and pick where you want to start.
Okay, so the first one we're going to start with, under the 602B applications is Cascade Christian Church Camp, Inc. And after the review of the application and all the supporting documentation, we were able to get ahold of them and go over the calendar with them. So we, after speaking with Mary Ellen, we are recommending 298 days of exempt use and 67 days of commercial use.
Sorry, say that. 298 exempted what?
298 days exempt and 67 days of commercial use.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Cascade Christian Church Camp exempt application. 298 days for exempt purpose and 67 days for commercial use.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one?
Uh, the next one will be Northwest District Bible Missionary Church.
Full exemption.
And we are recommending a full exemption, um, on this, this parcel.
Can you tell me where this is?
On ELO Road.
Back in the back? Huh. And I, I don't remember where that place was.
Oh, it's, uh, it's where they used to be, they called it. Ula Camp, or they had a, what was the name of that? I know which one it is, right at the top of the hill.
I know what you're talking about, but I can't remember what the sign says.
I can't remember either. I, I know what, okay, I know where it's at. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the Northwest District Bible Missionary Church exemption application for full exemption.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, our next one is, uh, we, if you remember, we tabled this one last week. It's for the Protestant Episcopal Church, also known as Paradise Point. So Megan was kind enough to meet with us. We went over the calendar together. And, uh, so after reviewing that calendar with her, we are amending our recommendation to three hundred and forty-two days exempt and twenty-three days of commercial use, after meeting with her, and she is here today.
Megan, welcome.
Thank you. I believe she would stand for any questions you might have.
Yeah, anything you want to add?
Yeah, um, first, my name is Megan Kittredge. I'm the camp director at Paradise Point Camp, which is a ministry of the Episcopal Diocese of Idaho Protestant Episcopal Church. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, of those twenty-three days, five of those days were direct service to nonprofit organizations. In my understanding, as attending meetings and watching recordings, and the commission has been really working to ask what is the alignment with these groups? With the Articles of Incorporation and the purpose for which the organization is organized. In our Articles of Incorporation for the Protestant Episcopal Church, one of our purposes is charitable work. I wonder, and I'd like to hear, if that is a direct correspondence with our serving of nonprofit organizations, um, as we operate as a camp and a availability for nonprofits to bring other groups of young people to Valley County.
I'm just wondering, Sue, if part of this come under six oh two C? I don't know, maybe she signed up, I don't know.
That, that is something, uh, that we'd have to run by the prosecuting attorney's office, uh, for compliance.
Do you have anything?
Input on that?
I mean, can you do both a B and a C application on, on the same?
I believe we're outside of the window for certainly twenty twenty-three.
So I know they can certainly apply under both codes for next year. Um, I think because they, we had another organization that they were denied under one, under B, but then, but it was prior to the April fifteenth deadline, they reapplied under C.
I remember that.
Um, and they were granted a partial exemption. Um, so I can, I appreciate your thinking, and many organizations are thinking like that. Um, I think it goes back to, what is that organization? Are they putting on these camps for their own organization? Or are they renting that property, leasing that property, lending that property to another organization? So it would depend on, I believe, from what I've learned through this process in the last two years, that as long as you guys are using that property for your own purpose, that that would fall under the exemption. At any time you were to rent the property out for weddings, corporate retreats, you know, other organizations using your property, even if they are nonprofit.
I guess I'm trying to draw this line between the charitable work for which the church was organized and the charitable organizations for which we serve, in the same way that we, religions are really hard to have a membership for, and we had this discussion last week. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, YMCA, they have member and non-member pricing. They have membership that is like very clear. A church that welcomes all, really hard to establish that membership. Um, so that's why I'm trying to, as this is a new precedent, a new work, you know, way that we're working, to make sure that we're totally clear and that we're not overcharging our nonprofit groups, um, because really that's, those are the people that we prefer to serve. And.
If I understand it right, and I could be wrong here, but if we can remain charitable, you have to lease it out to five oh one C three, other charitable organizations. If you don't, if they're just a standard group with no, and I would assume that would be.
As, as long as those organization is using the property for their own purpose, whatever that is, it's outlined in their Articles of Incorporation and bylaws. Please correct me, Ari, if I'm, if I miss, miss the target here. Um, but once they either, once they let other organizations, so it doesn't matter if they're nonprofit or organizations or not, they're now letting a, another organization use, rent their property. And that's where, that's where it becomes a commercial use. I, I had to wrap my head around this, too, because I, I, everybody kind of has that belief and, and it is kind, it's a common core belief. But as long as they're using the property for their own activities, whatever that is, that falls under their exempt status.
So does the, so the exempt status have to do, um, when you're looking at exempt status, are you looking at that organization's bylaws?
Articles of Incorporation bylaws and Idaho code.
That, they'll cover that, and then the Idaho code comes in.
But as soon as that property gets used by another organization, it becomes a commercial use.
Sure, I understand that.
I believe, this is the part I'm a little shaky on, but I believe if they, let's say they applied under six oh two C, so our charitable fraternal annulment. If they let other organizations use the property at no charge, other five oh one three Cs, I believe that would fall under the charitable, if there's no charge.
If there's no charge, it's not.
Right, no, that's my point, that if, if they did apply under six oh two C and they let other five oh one three Cs use their property at no charge, that qualifies under charitable, right? Even if it is a different organization using the property?
Cases that we're looking at, the Confluence Institute and the Thoth Tooth Chapel. Both of those dealt with Indian customers. It was outside of the organization that was using the property. I don't think there's any case law.
No, no, that, that's what I'm asking, is if they let other property, other organizations use their property and they're applying under six oh two C, then that becomes a charitable use, so it would qualify for exemption. Is that correct?
But if they charge, then that's a breach of that charitable.
Well, it becomes a commercial use if they're charging.
And the other thing that I think is important, and we tried to explain this last year to a lot of church campuses, it may be a business decision to say, you know, we're gonna go ahead and continue charging these groups every year because they're a big part of our income, knowing that it's gonna cost me some property tax. And, and I think that's very important because there's actually commercial camps that make a living doing exactly what you're doing.
I understand, um, and we've taken some of the recommendations that were made last year by the commission. Um, so that's kind of my second question, is those changes that we've made, including a statement of faith in our guest group agreement, um, as well as daily, uh, offerings of prayer on the campus, regardless of who's in session, um, are those taken into consideration in our application?
I would assume if the whole group is involved in the prayer, then yeah, I would say that's probably a religious exception. But if somebody's standing outside saying the prayer and the rest of the folks are inside having a meeting, no, that doesn't work. So it's kind of hard to delineate.
And that's part of the question about membership, right? Which gets into, and, and may, that might not be something that you all wanted to decide today or feel like you have the authority to decide today. But, um, that will be a, a continuing question, uh, as us religious organizations consider serving outside organizations as evangelism. You can't know somebody and know their religion unless you know them.
And I think that's what they were talking about last, was the last week we were here doing these is, it comes to a point where we gotta get ahold of legislators, you guys do, and say, okay, what are we gonna do with this five oh one C three organization that we've been using all this time? How do we deal with a charitable organization and charge it? Because it didn't have to be that way for years and years. Now we're having to deal with it. So I think it's gonna have to go through that cycle of dealing with, uh, getting a legislator on board and say, let's look at this whole picture again. Because it's not up to us.
Right, and, and I am here today to ask about the nonprofit question because it is very nuanced and between membership and charitable work and nonprofit organizations. Um, and even though it only changes our dates by five days, because this is essentially setting some kind of precedent. And that's why I'm here before you kind of giving you my spiel. Yeah.
Well, and I appreciate, because, you know, it's good that you're, you're looking at it. I guess the only thing I could add is if we make our decision today and you go back and think, I don't feel good about this, you can appeal it.
Right.
To us, and if you don't like that decision, you can go on up to the state. And a lot of cases are decided at that state level. They kind of detest or tell us what we did wrong.
Well, and we're here to, can't do anything before there's a, a movement and a decision, right?
Right now, I'm gonna, you got a proposal of three hundred and forty days exempt.
Three forty-two.
Three forty-two, twenty-three tax. So I'll make the motion that we accept the appraisers' recommendation for those dates for Paradise Point. Second. Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Megan. Okay, the next one is, American Legion?
Uh, American Legion, yes.
And I think that was full exemption, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion that we approve full exemption for the American Legion. Second. Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Cascade Golf Course, same thing?
Yes.
So I'll second Neil's motion.
I'm trying to find it here.
Cascade Golf Course.
Cascade Golf Association, there's two different, there's two parcels.
Here it is. Well, because the commercial space is less than three percent.
And it's calculated off, uh, not the income, but the SCAR footage.
Interesting.
Um, and so once that was calculated, they fall under the three percent. So therefore, they, they qualify for a full exemption.
Yeah, make a motion that we, uh, approve the Gulf, Cascade Golf Association, uh, for full exemption.
So before I second that, so let me get this straight, because the city Cascade leases the ground from the Bureau, and the city leases it out to the Cascade Golf Association. But this is theoretically Bureau ground.
Right.
Wouldn't that automatically go? I don't know. Did I just soak in a can of worms?
No.
Do they look at it as a separate entity, even though it's not talking about the dirt?
Correct, so the Bureau of Reclamation doesn't, they don't do anything with it. Granted, you're right, the city leases the property from them, and then in turn, they, they have the Cascade Golf Association that runs the golf course.
The golf course doesn't own anything. Golf Association doesn't own anything.
The Golf Association owns, uh, is it the land?
They have two.
They have two parcels that they do own, and the rest of it is the city, the city's ground.
You are right, there's a little chunk down by that one pond that I think that was. Yeah, that's right, I forgot about that.
I have no idea how that ever happened.
It's what it is.
It is what it is, I guess, so I'll make the motion, or did you give him a motion for the Cascade Golf Course?
He made a motion.
For full exemption. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sappala Richard Foundation.
Yep, Richard Sappala Foundation, Inc., is the ice rink, um, the parking. And they have been recommended for full approval. Um, there's a portion in there that is, uh, a small commercial, and they, year after year, have proven that it's three percent. Less than three percent, so kind of the same concept on that as well.
The size rink.
The ice rink is exempt, but there's a small portion in there that's business, and so, um, we actually challenged them, um, and they would, they jumped through all the hoops and proved that the SCAR footage being used was this amount, and when you calculate it all, it become, it's under the three percent, which Idaho code, well, Idaho code allows for.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the Richard Sappala Foundation, Inc., full exemption.
One second. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, I think this is the last one on the list. YMCA.
Okay, uh, Chrissy was able to get ahold of them. Uh, we tabled this last week, if you'll remember correctly, uh, because we had not been able to get ahold of them. And their calendar was very vague, so it was even hard to speculate. So, once she got ahold of them, um, and visited with them, we are at two hundred and ninety-nine days of exemption, sixty-six days of commercial.
For all parcels?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion, we approve a partial exemption for the YMCA of two hundred and ninety days exempt, six hundred, sixty-six, uh, commercial.
Two hundred and ninety-nine days.
Two ninety-nine exempt, sixty-six as a commercial.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Please let everyone know that they have a chance to appeal this if they don't like it.
I know that I told you we were gonna be done with these today, um, but there was one entity that Chrissy finally was able to get ahold of, uh, this morning. And so you guys had made it, uh, a decision on Camp Idah Haven on the twenty-ninth. Um, I will be asking to be put on the agenda, uh, Clark Miller, for next Monday, uh, for you to reconsider it after she spoke with them.
Was that a partial, too?
Uh, yes, it was. And we just, after being able to. Yeah. Yeah, so after we were able to speak with them, uh, we haven't.
Is that the last one?
It will be for next Monday, because we didn't get it on the agenda. We didn't know till this morning.
Right, what is, what are you here for, John? Oh.
Right, so, that's it, that's all I have today.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So our next agenda item is not till two o'clock. We'll take about a twelve, thirteen-minute break, and we'll see everyone here, too.